Welcome to Campaign 2025 in Mansfield. I'm Steve Cassio, and it is time to talk about the Mansfield City Council race, specifically Place Five. It has four candidates. It's a special election. And in the studio today, running for Mansfield City Council, Place Five, Lance Hood. Welcome to About Mansfield.
Thank you so much, Steve. I really do appreciate it.
We have not, or maybe we have. Have we met before?
We have. We actually went through the first class of Mansfield Moon University together.
Moon University?
Yeah.
Oh, that was, oh my god.
Years ago now.
That was so much fun. And I've recommended that to many, many people. That's, okay. I was trying to remember, where do I know the name?
Remember the long hair. It used to be, I grow my hair out for children with cancer, so if you remember the long hair, when you and I met, it would have been about 15 more inches.
Now I remember. So, that was fun. What did you get out of my Mansfield Moon University?
Well, I gotta tell you, Moon University for me was my introduction to Mansfield. My family and I moved here in the spring of 2020. We were one of the first COVID move-ins. We bought our house in the middle of COVID, came in, and I came from an area where I was very involved in the community and was really wanting to get back into the community here. And when I saw the Moon University piece open up and understood what it was, the weeks-long program, getting to see every piece of the city, it really engaged me in my interest in really learning about the community that I moved into. And since then, I've stayed involved with the community.
Yeah.
So for me, it was an amazing program, and like you, I tell everybody I can about it. There's now a youth version of the program as well that I'm trying to get my daughter to go to.
My mini-versity.
Yes.
Yeah, which is great, and you know, all you have to do is be a high schooler, and you're eligible to go through the mini-versity.
Exactly right.
I have told many, many people about the Moon University, and we, that's right, you and I were Class One.
That's correct.
And that, yeah, tremendous. If, so if anybody out there listening wants to learn more about the inner workings of the city, look it up.
And if there's any question on whether it should still be funded, look at where I am now. I'm running for city council because that program introduced me to the city, so.
That is awesome. Let's start out with, who is Lance Hood, and why is he running for city council?
Okay. So let's start off with the first part of that question, which is, who is Lance Hood? First and foremost, Lance Hood is a father. I have four children who I love and adore, and I have spent my entire life telling my kids they can do whatever they want to do, they can be whatever they want to be. And with myself professionally, I spent 15 years in nonprofit administration. I worked for organizations such as Mothers Against Strung Driving, the Points of Light Foundation, AmeriCorps, America's Promise, really kind of looking at that nonprofit arena. Then I started focusing more outside of the national scope into the local and state-level scope, Variety of the Children's Charity of Texas, Harthouse Dallas, and made the decision that I really wanted to get back and work with kids. I really wanted to be involved in impacting children, not just families, but children. And made the switch 10 years ago into education. I was a classroom teacher for eight and a half years, and was taken out of the classroom about a year and a half ago here in Mansfield and moved into administration. I am a high school principal here in Mansfield. I actually work at Lakewood. And I get the opportunity to now tell kids that aren't just my own that they can do anything they want to do. And your second part of that question was, why am I running?
That was the second part of my question.
I'm running because, again, I want to make that difference. You know, there's that old quote by Margaret Mead, never doubt that a small group of committed people can make a difference, because indeed, that's all that ever has. I want to be part of that small group. I want to be one of those people that's out there making a difference.
That sounds like a quote that would come from an educator.
It's one that I know off the top of my head, right?
What did you teach when you were a teacher?
I was a dreaded math teacher. Everything from eighth-grade math all the way up to senior financial math, AP Stats, Algebra II, all those fun maths that have more than just numbers in them.
Okay. Let's talk about, there had to have been a moment when you said, I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna run for city council. Where were you? What were you doing? Were you at home, sitting by the pool, in a restaurant? Or tell me about the moment when you finally said, I'm doing it.
So if I'm being completely honest with you, there were two moments.
Okay.
The first moment came about this time a year ago. There was a city council member that I respected very much. I agreed with 90% of what that individual did, and they made the decision at the very last minute not to run, and left this, or left a position to where there was only one person running. And it was an unopposed election that year. And I believe so much in the democratic process, and in the power of choice, and in the voice of the voter, I don't really feel like any position should ever go unopposed. And with that, I made the decision about a year ago that I was gonna start laying the groundwork. It was time for me to start looking and getting involved in the community at that level. And then this past year, or actually just a few months ago, one of my, one of the individuals that I'm running against posted that he or she was gonna be running a little bit earlier than others, and made me realize, okay, now's the time. And I'll be completely honest, I was sitting in bed, couldn't sleep one night. It was probably about 1:30 in the morning. I do suffer from insomnia from time to time. Going through the websites and came across the website and was like, but that position's not open this year. That position was just elected. Did a little bit of research, and I guess about a week later, it was announced that the position was going to be open. And I made the decision at that point in time. I talked with my wife, talked with the rest of my family, and we decided to move up the process, and now's the time. So I've been here every since.
Moved up the process. So you were going to eventually run for city council, maybe a year, two, five, 10 years from now, but you moved it up?
Yeah. I was really thinking about another year or two was when I was gonna throw my hat in the ring. And like I said, the process moved up early, and I'm learning as I go. It's a true grassroots campaign.
There's a short list of hot-button topics. I mean, anybody who has spent five minutes on social media around the city of Mansfield probably knows these topics. And so let's just go and take them one at a time. I'm just gonna throw out a word or a couple of words and let you roll with it.
Let's go for it. I probably know what the first two are, at least.
Care to take a guess?
I'm gonna assume number one is apartments.
Mansfield Stadium.
Oh, okay. Mansfield Stadium. I will be, I'm gonna come out here and make what may be an unpopular opinion. I am 100% in support of the stadium. When I look at Mansfield, and when I look at the long-term growth that I want to see in the city that I live in, I see the stadium as being one of the perfect building blocks. And I think when you look at the stadium, you have to look at more than just the fact that it's going to be a soccer venue. I think you have to look at the entire complex and the fact that it's going to be an entertainment complex. High Five is gonna be there with everything that that location has to offer. The former ballpark is gonna be reopened and reimagined as Mansfield Sports Park. Those things are gonna be there. When you look at everything that's gonna come into place, I think what you're gonna find is an area that is a great meeting point for this community, a great place for us to focus around and bring that sense of community back that's been lost since COVID.
Yeah.
If you were to ask me why I moved to this town, one of the key reasons I moved here was the sense of community. I looked at the events that took place, from the Pickle Parade, to the Fourth of July fireworks, to Christmas downtown. I wanted it to be in an area that those types of places, or those types of events took place. And I think this venue is gonna give us the opportunity to really expand upon those things. And it also gives us an opportunity to bring people in from out of town. I mean, let's face it, everybody we know goes to Grand Prairie, they go to Main Event, they go to Epic.
Chicken and Pickle.
You got it. We don't have anything like that here right now. This is our opportunity to bring some of those tax dollars from other cities back into our own.
Moving on, downtown redevelopment.
I love downtown. When we first moved here, the, and forgive me, the name of the location's not coming to me right now, the Ice Cream Parlor that was downtown.
The Hypnotic Emporium.
Hypnotic Emporium. Thank you so much. We would spend weekends at Hypnotic Emporium, sitting down outside on the patio. You know, again, we moved here in the middle of COVID, so I didn't get to see some of the earlier things that might have been there. But I love downtown. I love walking around downtown. I love that it's an eclectic combination of things. You have everything from being able to get a tattoo, to getting a drink, to seeing something at the Far Best Theater, to going across the street, getting a cup of coffee at Flying Squirrel. Downtown, to me, is something that any small town needs, and we've already got the building blocks there. We already have the pieces for it. We are currently doing this interview on the 19th. On the 22nd, we're gonna be there for the Pickle Parade, and we're gonna really get to the opportunity to show off this community and what it can be.
The next hot topic is the new City Hall and its canals.
When it comes to the current City Hall, I don't know that a lot of people understand how spread out the employees within the city of Mansfield are. I think people see the current City Hall and assume that everybody that works for the city works in that location, and that's simply not the case.
I can name five different locations where the city employees work.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah.
And when you hear everybody, especially in the community, or the situations that we're in right now, you listen to everybody talk about employees that work from home, and telecommuters, and things of that nature, and how we need to be back together to truly get the work done, here's an opportunity to build a location that can do that for us, that can actually bring a lot of the people together again that need to be together. Right now, we have parks in one location, we have city management in one location, we have streets and sanitation in another location, we have the water department in another location. So when you think about all those things, I think people see dollar signs, rightfully so. It's money, it's tax dollars. I understand where people are coming from. But you also have to think about the growth that the city's going through. When City Hall was built, Mansfield was not the size that it was. When it was first built, they were looking at a projected growth that was off. Our growth is astronomical right now, and I know some people don't like that growth, some people want to see that growth changed, but when it boils right down to it, we need a location that our city employees can work at to be as effective as they possibly can to save our money in the long run. For the canal, again, that building spot. It's a way for us to come together as a community, to be together again. And every since COVID, and I keep going back to that word, I think people have just now started to get ready to really be together again. And what a great location to do it out, what a beautiful spot. I've had the opportunity to see the videos and the projections of what it's going to look like, and I can't wait to see some of the changes that are coming to Mansfield.
Apartments.
You hit me with that one last. I can't sit here and say that I have never lived in an apartment. I have. When I was in college, I lived in an apartment. When my wife and I first moved to Dallas, we moved into an apartment. I understand the need for apartments, I understand why apartments are here. I also understand that when you, if we go back to Facebook, if we go back online and we look at what people want to see in the city, they want to see things like HEB, which is now here. They want to see a Trader Joe's. I think that's the new one that I see that keeps popping up everywhere. In order to get those types of things, you have to have people. You have to have a population base to shop at these different locations. And I think in a lot of ways, that's one of the things apartments do. Apartments build up your availability, your people, your tax base is being brought in. Now, am I 100% in apartments? Not 100%, and I will admit that. Some people will say that I'm a fence-sitter when I make this next comment, but here's where I'm at with apartments. I do think we need some. I agree, 100%. We hear a lot of people talk about the fact that their children can't live here after they graduate from college, because they can't afford the houses. Well, then where are we gonna put them? Where are they gonna live?
Right.
If you want your children to live in this community, the community they grew up in, the community that you're still in, we're gonna have to have reasonably priced locations for them to be. So I think that's one thing apartments do. Now, at the same time, and this is where I maybe don't always agree with city leadership, I do believe the recent change in square footage for new builds, I think that is something that needs to be looked at. I do think one of the reasons we need apartments is because we don't have that middle range of houses for people to move into. Well, that's partially because of the square footage requirements the city of Mansfield has. If we were to lower that square footage, we could then look at some communities that were smaller houses, that were more entry-level houses. I readily admit, I am not a lifelong Mansfield resident. I've been here five years. It's because I couldn't afford to live in Mansfield until then. I will readily admit, Mansfield is a location we had looked at for years, and until the time came that we were able to make it happen, we weren't able to do it. Had there been apartments here at that point in time, maybe that's something we could have done, and we could have stayed here lifelong.
So you're not anti-apartments, but you're not totally 100% pro-apartments?
Exactly.
Are you fence-sitting? You did say at the beginning that you may be.
There are a lot of people that will say that's fence-sitting. Here's what I will say, I know one of my, one of the individuals I'm running against has come out and said that they will never, ever approve another apartment. I will never say never, never, never.
Right. How can you say that when you don't know if someone has come up with a better mousetrap?
You're exactly right. How can I sit here and tell you that I will never approve something when it could come to the table with the best offer this city has ever seen, can do wonders for this city in the long run, but because I told you I would never do it, I either can't do it, or I turn around and lie to you, one of the two. So you will not hear me say I will never approve another apartment. I will tell you, it's gonna be very hard to get me to approve another apartment complex.
If you're elected, what will success look like after the first year of your term?
So I think with any elected position, you have to assume the first three to four months are gonna be education. The first three to four months are gonna be really getting to understand what's happening.
Fire hose to the mouth, you are learning like crazy.
You got it. You're right there. And I think that's one of the things that I understand coming in. I believe this, I believe the quote from Hamilton was, I want to be in the room where it happens. That's what I want to do. I want to be in that room.
Again, another quote from an educator.
I want to be able to impact this city. I want to listen to what the community has to say. I want to be an open forum. I want to be a bridge builder. I want to continue the growth that the city has had without taking away from the things that we're used to, without taking away from the level of police service that we're used to, without taking away from the level of fire response that we're used to. I want to make sure that all those things stay as they were, or as they are.
But how do we grow and still keep that small-town charm that everybody seems to be, I want, I want that, I still want this city to be like it was when we were 40,000 people?
Well, and I think that's where the community events and the community spirit comes back in. You know, I'm gonna pick on a program that we did just recently that I actually attended, I liked it, the World Record Drone Show that took place. Great event. If you drove up and down Heritage Parkway, there were cars stacked everywhere, but there was no central location for people to go to. There was no event for people to be at. If you think back to the old fireworks shows that used to be, the fireworks shows, there was a location for people, they could either be at the fireworks show, be on the grounds, or they could watch it from outside. I want to bring back an opportunity for people to be together again, to build that camaraderie, to really look together. And that's where things like the stadium and the entertainment district, that's where things like a Revive Downtown, where the canal, all those things, I think really do have the opportunity to truly bring that community spirit back, whether we're at 40,000 or whether we're at 70,000.
What do you feel is the one misconception about city government that you would like to clear up with voters?
Ooh, that's a biggie. I think one of the things that a lot of people don't understand about city government, and really, this goes for any level of government, you always have your vocal individuals. You have your vocal voters, you have small blocks of individuals that tend to be very vocal. But I think a lot of times, people forget that there are a lot of people who agree with decisions that are made that you never hear from. And a lot of that comes from the sheer fact of human nature of, when we don't like something, we say something about it. And very often, when we like things, when we're happy with them, when we are in agreement with what is going on, we tend not to say anything at all. And I think one of the things that the city council, and in the last few weeks, have done a much better job about this, is really getting out there and getting to hear the constituency. And I think that's a key point, and one of the reasons that I'm running, I want to build that communication back. I want it to be a two-way communication street. When you look at things like the State of the City address that comes out, fantastic information, information that every voter in this city, every resident in the city should hear, but there's maybe 75 to 100 people in the audience.
Right.
And that's one of the things that I want to build back. I want to build it back through communication channels, through social media, whatever the case may be, really building an opportunity. So I think that disconnect is, just because we hear a lot of people who are unhappy about decisions being made one way or the other, you still have to remember how many people are behind that decision who aren't saying anything at all.
If you're elected, what do you anticipate being your biggest challenge during the two years during your term?
I think one of the biggest challenges that I have is, and it's not just in this campaign, it's gonna be in the future as well, it's, I haven't lived here forever. You know, when you, when you look online, when you see everything that's taking place, when you talk to people in the community, everybody talks about, well, it wasn't like this 20 years ago. Well, this wasn't, it wasn't like this when I moved here.
Yeah.
I've been here five years. Things aren't the same from when I moved here five years ago.
So you don't know the names of all the restaurants in town?
I don't know the names of all the restaurants. I don't remember the Rodeo Arena where Legacy High School now stands.
The Caldel Arena.
Those are things that I don't remember, I don't know those. But when you take into account the size and the growth of this city, I think in many ways, I represent a huge chunk of this city now. That chunk that hasn't lived here for 15, 20-plus years, who doesn't remember a lot of that stuff. But yet, I still see the growth, I still see things that I would like to change, I still see some things I miss, you know? So I think the big thing for me is gonna be getting people to know who I am, getting people to understand, I'm in this community because I want it to be, I'm staying here because I love it, and I'm reaching out and taking that first grasp of trying to help shape it to keep what I love about this town and what I see here.
And what I see in you, as opposed to your two other male opponents, is I don't see any gray in your beard. So you're bringing some youth to the council, if I'm reading you correctly.
I would love that, but unfortunately, I think the microphone is covering up the gray that's in the beard. My daughters will definitely tell you there's gray in this beard right now. You know, I will be straight out there, I am in my late 40s.
That's youth.
Depending upon what you want to look at is youth, you know? I, I am reaching out because, again, I am at a point, as I mentioned, I believe I said this earlier, I have four children. I have one that graduates from college this year from the University of Texas as an Aggie. It's a very hard check to cut, but he's where he needed to be. I have one that's up in New York getting a musical theater degree. I have a daughter this year who's graduating high school, who is going to allow me the freedom to have some time to go do some stuff. That's my dancer, she's very involved, all kinds of different things. My youngest daughter is a freshman in high school who is also very involved, but I'm now at a point in my life to where I have done what I need to do for my family, I now want to expand upon who my family is, and really look at all of Mansfield and helping them be as successful as we can be.
How will you hold yourself accountable to voters and ensure that you follow through on your campaign promises?
So for me, you know, we talk a lot of times about how votes in this town tend to be 7-0, and everybody agrees with everything. I think people don't understand, these meetings actually begin in the middle of the day.
Right.
It's not once everybody's at the dais. It's actually in the middle of the day, there's working luncheons, there are events that are taking place behind the scenes. I used the phrase earlier, in the room where it happens, that's where a lot of the discussion takes place. That's where a lot is happening. And really being able to put my two cents in there, and letting people know the things that I want to see, and that I want to see happen within this town, I have never been afraid to speak up. I've never been afraid to share my opinion, I have never been afraid to voice my concerns. I am someone who not a lot of people know, who is still willing to step out there, still willing to put my name out on the line, and reach out and do what's in the best interest of the city. And if that means voting for things that I personally maybe don't agree with, but I see the reason for them to be in the city, I'm willing to take that step. I'm willing to make that move, because I'm elected by the residents, not by Lance Hood and in of himself.
One more question, and then we'll get into something fun.
Okay.
All right. Is there a question that you thought that I was going to ask, you were prepared to answer it, I didn't ask the question, and what would be the answer to that question?
I actually have a couple of them in my head, to be honest with you. There's one biggie. What's the one thing that I think Mansfield doesn't have, or the one thing that I think Mansfield should have?
Lance, what's the one thing you think Mansfield should have?
And I, I'm either gonna win some votes here, I'm gonna lose some votes here, because it did not pass bond election a couple of years ago. A city this size needs a true recreation center. It needs a location that individuals can come to, who do not have the money to pay for a lifetime, who need something a little more than Planet Fitness for their kids. Yes, we have a multi, the MAC is there, but the MAC is not what we need on a large scale. We need a community pool, we need a community workout room, we need some basketball gyms, we need some meeting spaces. I really want to see a true recreation center in this town. At the size we are, it's something that I think we need. I love our parks. I am pleased that I currently sit on what most people call the Parks Board, it's actually the Mansfield Parks Facilities Development Corporation. I love that I sit there, because I get to help direct the parks. Again, one of the key reasons I moved to this town. But we need things for all residents. We need something that everybody can come to and everybody can enjoy. So that's the one thing that I think we really do need to look at in this town right now.
You said there were two questions. What was the other question?
The other question that I think, why me?
Yeah.
Why me? This is a crowded field.
Hey Lance, why you?
There are four people running for Place Five, and I think what I bring to the table is a little bit different from everybody else. I bring a combination of business background with the nonprofit management, I've managed budgets of a million dollars and higher, everything from fundraising to grant development to program development, program management. I have been in the classroom, I've managed employees up to 62 at a time, 15 direct reports. I've got the business side of things, but I also wear my heart on my sleeve. If you are looking for somebody who's gonna give it 24/7, who's gonna give everything they can to this job, this position, that's what I bring to the table. I am, I do not come from, I do not come from generational wealth, I am not independently wealthy, I'm an educator. You know, I am privileged enough that I married up, and my wife makes the money that allows us to be able to live in Mansfield.
Nothing wrong with that.
There is nothing wrong with it at all. And I think what I bring is that youthful spirit, that gung-honess, that I want to make a difference in this city.
I mentioned, we're gonna get into the fun stuff. One more question, because you mentioned that there are four candidates running for Place Five in this special election, which means, more times than not, there's gonna be a runoff. Who would you like to be your opponent in a runoff?
Wow. Throw daggers, why don't you? It's hard to say. I will be very honest, that we have, there's one individual who's running on this campaign, we know what side of the fence that individual falls on. I know what side of the fence I fall on. I will tell you right now, I am a fiscally conservative liberal, and I know that sounds really stupid to put those two things together. I like money, I like protecting money, but at the same time, I believe that sometimes you have to spend money for the betterment of the community. So I do look at those two things in line. There's two other candidates who are fantastic gentlemen, I just don't know that much about them if I'm being 100% honest with you. So who would I want to runoff against? If, you're putting me on the spot, so I'm gonna answer the question. I know where one candidate sits, I know what side of the I know what side of the fence that candidate sits on. That's who it would be.
Let's change the temperature in the room now. Every school in the city of Mansfield, including the one that you work for, has a mascot. You've got the Eagles, the Tigers, the Jaguars, the Broncos and the Wolves. Okay, those would be the five high schools. Go ahead.
There's one more.
There's one more?
Frontier actually has one too, but I cannot think of what Frontier STEM Academy says right now. We'll have to get that up and put it in post.
All right. If the Mansfield City Council had a mascot, what would it be?
You know, I'm going to go real quick with this. I almost think it needs to be a dog. And the reason for it, think about how much publicity and how many people love the dog park. Beautiful facility, something that is relatively new, but yet is still tied into the history of Mansfield because you still have the historical museum right there with the manhouse. I think it would almost have to be that dog because you can, it encapsulates everything. Man, man's best friend field, or the name is avoiding me at the moment.
Man's best dog field.
Man's best dog field, there we go. It captures the history, it captures the current, and it captures the fun-loving nature that we all want to see with the community.
Would this dog be a specific breed or just a mutt?
Oh, see, I'm a foster family, so I almost have to go mutt. If I had to go breed, it'd probably be a Welsh corgi. But I have been fostering for so long now that I don't know that I could ever go back to a purebred. Just the foster nature and seeing those dogs and knowing they need love just as much as purebreds, I think I'd be going that mutt.
Lance Hood, if someone wanted to reach out or if someone wanted more information about Lance Hood and your candidacy for place five, do you have a website, a Facebook, Instagram, a Tinder? What do you, what do you got going out there?
Well, the 20, the 25th anniversary was just back in October, so I don't have a Tinder account. But I do have a Facebook. It is hoodformansfield.org. It's spelled out, F-O-R, so hoodformansfield.org. I also post all the time on Facebook. It is also hoodfor, hoodformansfield on Facebook as well. But all my social medias are open. You can find me anywhere on them.
Hoodformansfield.org, I would assume dot com was already taken.
The nonprofit background in me just says I need to go the dot org piece and just keep it going. I, I look at this being a, being a living, breathing website to where if I am lucky enough to be elected by the residents here within the city and the voters, I'm going to keep that website up to really build communication back from myself, back to those that voted me into position.
Transparency.
You got it.
Hoodformansfield.org is the place. Lance Hood, running for place five. Do you have any closing comments?
You know, my closing comment is whether you vote for me, whether you vote for one of my opponents, I want to see you get out and vote. If you look back at our historical nature within this town, this, these elections for city council bring somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people out. And we are way bigger than that. There are far too many people in the city. And the city council impacts our day-to-day life more so than our state representatives, more so than our federal representatives.